I can see you guys. Can you see me now?
I can, we can.
Okay, good. Figure it out.
Great.
I don't want to scare you guys with my beautiful makeup here.
Welcome to the 21st century. Yay.
Friends, just let everybody know.
I'm going back to natural.
The recording has started. Just want you to know that this is now, the minute we started this, that we initiated, that the entire thing is being recorded.
Alright.
Alright. Sarah Warren Brock, do we have a solution to our translation conversation? Or do you want to call me to discuss? Sarah?
Sorry, I just got the audio. Say again, I'm sorry.
Oh hey, do we have a solution to our translation? Because we're gonna make an announcement on that.
Um, so.
Punch me offline. Right now, we're being recorded on the meeting.
Yes, we don't have the simultaneous translation for this meeting, but if someone has submitted a request to address the board, like we would do in the boardroom, we have a translator here who, like, the person would speak a sentence or two in Spanish and the translator would speak it in English. But we don't have simultaneous translation for tonight, but we're gonna work on a fix for May 7.
Okay, so we will announce that at the top of the meeting as well?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
So John, when the meeting starts, we won't be doing that statement from the translator, but there's the other two statements to read.
Right, and Vanina also just pointed out that she's happy to interpret consecutively if we need her to do so.
Okay.
Hey Maria, apparently there's a button in settings in Zoom that's always on that says "Touch up my appearance." I don't know what it does, but I'm turning mine on.
I mean, you look 52 Craig, so it's working.
Awesome.
Hopefully Oscar gets the power, and he was having a power outage that was keeping from me able to turn in. Maria was out too as well. Maria, your audio is off, your mute is on.
I live down there. I live above the hill of the transformer here across from Marine Park, so it blew about maybe, you know, when we went off about 20 minutes ago. But I got power within shortly, I don't know over there. I don't know if it's connected with the thing. I think this, 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 I remember the last meeting, it blew out too when I was in the meeting, so I don't know. There's a message there.
Exactly. Did I just accidentally join the closed session? No, no, this is the public meeting. Hi Steve. Okay. We just won't be starting for a few more minutes.
Understood. Like your background today.
I'm in Miami today.
Nice.
Better times.
Yeah.
I was wondering where their background was from.
I'm trying to shake it up. We have so little to look forward to. All I have is like, what background will I do for this Zoom meeting? I'm serious, that's one thing I look forward to.
Our beaches still look beautiful, you know.
I know, I was looking for my, I had the Santa Monica beach one up the other day.
Okay. Oh, there we go. Let me lift this thing up. There you go. So you can see me above my name here.
Is it your birthday, Maria?
No.
Oh, it just says happy birthday behind you.
Oh no, that was my grandson's birthday. I never took it down.
Oh, happy birthday. It'll be his birthday again next year. There's really no rush to take it down.
No, not anymore. It just brings joy at the time.
The Christmas lights. That's right.
That's a big American flag, Craig.
This is, I'm playing with settings. This is virtual background, which is what John's got going too.
Unfortunately, you're virtually in South Dakota.
Yeah, I'm working on it. That's just the first one I could find.
Yeah, keep.
Looks like he's running for the President of the United States.
There you go.
Oh Melody, how are you feeling?
I'm doing better, thank you. Thank you for the well wishes as well. Thank you.
I know. You look better, you look great.
Yeah. I'm still putting it together, but I'm doing much better than I was. I'm sitting upright, that's a good thing.
Okay, that's a good thing, yeah. Good for you, good.
Lori's still not back in. Anyone?
She is.
I am.
Yes, she is.
Oh, there you are, hi.
I could not get back into the other meeting.
You're in the Paul Lynn Center Square right now.
Oh, not on mine. I'm up in the corner, I don't know who that was.
The Joan Rivers seat, no, she was in the middle.
Ew, please.
Alright, it is, we'll be starting. It's 5:30, says my computer, so then we're gonna call this meeting to order at 5:30. Present at the meeting, we have six board members present. We are waiting for Board Member De La Torre, who is dealing with a power outage at his home. So hopefully Oscar will be joining us shortly.
I see him logged in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
Oh.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
So good, we're all here. We're, oh, there's Oscar, hey. Alright, great, so all board members are present, which brings us to the pledge. I also see student board member Kimya. I don't see any other student board members. If there are any present, please let me know.
John, you're on vacation. Are you on your yacht?
That's Miami, baby. Alright, so let's do our, let's all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Please place your hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Alright. America, and to the Republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's really odd doing that on a Zoom call, but hey, normalcy is normalcy.
At least we had Craig's background.
We have two sets of minutes to approve. I'd like to approve them. Can I approve them both at the same time, Sarah? Yes?
I move both sets of minutes.
I have Richard moving both sets, March 16th and March 19th. Do I have a second?
Second.
I see a second from Maria first. Uh, so I guess I should roll call this, I can, we're here. Kimya? Great, thank you. Richard? Give you just a thumbs up, I'm good. Craig?
Yes.
Maria? Oscar?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Mia Wachtel, I just saw her.
Yes.
And I'm a yes also. Is Ashlyn with us from Olympic tonight or no?
I will text her right now.
Okay, great. But we're happy to have all the people that we have, so that's our meeting.
And don't forget approval of the agenda.
Ah, thank you Sarah. So we have approved the agenda. We're adding one agenda item tonight, which is item K8, major action item. Adopt emergency resolution designating public works projects as an essential government function, and delegating authority to designate further public works project as an essential government function. This will be discussed if we approve it as a major action item K8. So do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Craig, seconded by Maria. We will do roll call again. I see TJ, Craig. Maria, thank you. Oscar. Uh, Lori. Wonderful. I see Kimya. Mia. Ralph.
Yes.
Did I get, I think that's all board members, and I'm a yes as well. Great, so we'll add that as a item K8. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? I guess I should, god, I'm terrible at this. I should have said do we have a motion to approve the agenda with that added to it. So now, I need a motion to approve the agenda with that added to the entire agenda. Moved by Lori, seconded by Craig. Let's do the roll again. Richard? Richard, give me a, Craig, Maria, Oscar, Lori. Lori, give me a thumbs up. Thank you very much. Kimya? Kimya, great. Ralph?
Yes.
Mia, thank you. Mia, and, great, so that's, the agenda is approved as amended, which brings us to report out from closed session. We have one item to report out from closed session. DN101219/20. Kindly note that the summary of the settlement is as follows. The district agrees, just agrees to reimburse parents for compensatory education not to exceed $42,000. The district shall pay reasonable attorney fees not to exceed $4,000. Motion made by Craig Foster, seconded by Richard Fielder and Jesswin. We had five in favor. Oscar was, De La Torre was not available due to the power outage, and I, John Keane abstained from voting on that item. Which now brings us to Board of Education commendation recognitions. I do not believe we have any.
No.
Then brings us to study session, which I do not believe we have either. Which then brings us to communications, which we do have. So let's start with Mia Wachtel for report from Santa Monica High School.
Um, hi everyone. So this week was the start of our virtual spirit week. So, our way of trying to connect the student body right now, during this obviously awful time, is by having this virtual spirit week. Like, for example, today was Workout Wednesday, and people were able to submit videos of themselves working out or posting their workout routines, and then we put it on our Santa Monica Instagram, so that's just one way of keeping spirit up. And there's nothing else really to update you all on. Everybody's at home doing work, and actually, virtual learning, I heard is going really well. So that's, that's good.
Thank you so much Mia. At times like this, just for Mia and for Kimya and for Ashlyn, we really depend on you guys for being voices of our student body. So please continue to reach out to us either on email, call us, just be, be that active board members that you guys are. Which brings us to Kimya for report from Malibu.
Yes, hi everyone. Pretty, pretty funny to see you all here. Malibu High is pretty much doing the same thing. We also had our virtual spirit week this week, which has been a little bit sad, I must admit. Um, today was Bring Your Dog to Zoom Day. So if you had a Zoom class, you would basically bring your pet or something, or if not, like a stuffed animal. Um, and it's just like something to throw in there to make everyone have a bit more fun with it, and to connect the students as much as we can. But other than that, everybody does like virtual learning, but is definitely getting a bit, a bit antsy. We miss school for sure. So, that's everything going on in Malibu.
Thanks so much, Kimya. I, I really, I love the fact how you guys are trying to make the best of this really awful situation, and I love Bring Your Dog to Zoom, and we might have to have that at the next board meeting.
John, can I just ask that the two board members, you can have, you know, contact with some of the students, and you could probably be another source for us in case any students that you know of do not have computers. So to get back to us so that we can get them computers, if you know of anybody in your networks. Thanks.
Yeah, if you guys could keep looking out. Any student or family that you hear, any staff member that you might hear who needs support, please let us know. Because we're really not connected right now. We need to keep reinforcing that. So thank you guys. So no, Sarah, no Ashlyn?
I don't see her. I'm gonna make a quick.
If she shows up, we'll add her in, it's no problem.
Oh.
Wait.
I'm here.
Sarah.
I don't know, I've got, Sarah, you, no, Chris Mock is next.
I actually have a text from Ashlyn. She says, um, I don't have wifi right now, so I can't Zoom. So, she just wants to let you guys know that she can't do Zoom right now.
Right, I thought we tried to center it with a hotspot. We'll have to.
The hotspots have not yet come in.
Okay. Yeah, we tried to remedy that, but I guess a lot of other people are pushing for the same technology. We'll get that.
I just want to make a quick announcement that if anybody, your little name over to the side, if you could rename yourself with your full name, so that if we need to call on you for public comments, that we know who, what your name is. Thank you.
Okay, so, oh, oh, no, it is, I'm sorry, Sarah, you were correct. Our next on the agenda is the SMM CTA, so Sarah Braf.
Okay, so everyone is working very, very hard to try and figure this all out. It is not easy, as we have families that don't want any education other than emotional social learning going on right now, and we have families that want eight to three full days. Obviously, we can't do either one of those. We're gonna have to come somewhere in the middle. We're trying very hard to do that. I know the district is trying very hard to get out both hotspots when they come in, and, and computers to people, but when there, I have had some instances where families, we're not getting a response from the admin. Is there, who is the next person, like, in the district? We should send those requests to. So I need a little clarification on that. We are, teachers are asking if they could have the 20th and 21st of April pupil free, because not everyone has had the opportunity to get on and get with it as far as what the plans are and everything. So I'm getting a lot of requests about that, that are new requests as of today, but I'm getting them from all over. So, do know that that is a question. We're trying to complete our negotiations on a memorandum of understanding to try and make sense and some clarity on how we're proceeding. We're stuck a little bit on the sub-issue. We're trying to get paid for them. And then, we don't have all the information from unemployment to know which is better, so we're in a little bit of a quandary about that right now. But, I like to thank Mark and the negotiation teams from both sides who have been meeting several times this week to try to pull it all together. And I think that's it unless you have a question. But we do know who passed the principle is the next person that should, we should be sending requests to. If for whatever reason communication is broken down, doesn't really matter why. Not a blame thing, but just trying to get to everybody.
Okay, so, so Ben, if you and Jackie could just get, get in touch with Sarah offline and let, give her advice on where teachers should be going for support, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Uh, which brings us to SEIU with Chris Mock. Before Chris starts, I do want to point out, everybody, we really need to make sure that everybody is muted. I think we've got that taken care of now. Just if you are using a cellphone and a computer, sometimes we get a reverb, so let's all try to work together to make this as less dissonant as possible, least dissonant as possible. Thank you. Chris Mock?
Good evening. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Droudie and the cabinet. It's April Fool's Day. Does anybody have a good joke? No? Probably not in the mood. Anyway. First, look, I hope that we are all staying safe and healthy. There are, these are definitely uncertain times, and we are faced with challenges that are new and unlike any we've had in the past, so we remain vigilant. SEIU remains fully engaged with the district leadership and all decisions that affect our unit members and their job assignments. The health and safety of our workers, students, families and community are the priority as we work together to stop the spread of this virus. SEIU and district leadership remain engaged around all discussions that affect our unit members, I think I just said that. And continue to work collaboratively to resolve issues around safety and communications. I'd like to also thank Mark Kelly for his assistance, also the superintendent for his, as well, as we continue to have those conversations around things that we need to resolve. I'd also like to thank and acknowledge the efforts of the district to ensure that all staff and students have access to a laptop and stay connected. Thank you for that. Just an added note that while SEIU, local 99 offices remain closed, staff are working and member resource center call-in is still open. Also, local 99 provided free bags of groceries to 800 families at our food pantry last week. So, and we provide ongoing assistance and access to resources and discounted services for all of its members during this crisis. Finally, I want to acknowledge the real heroes here. And that's, that is those classified staff who continue to report to work every day. That is our food service staff who ensure that our students continue to receive meals. Our campus security, custodians, maintenance, ground staff that ensure our schools and campuses are safe, clean and running. SEIU has asked the district to follow other districts and see that these staff are compensated for the risks that they take when they leave their homes and their families in service to our district and students. This board and administration have an opportunity to step up and acknowledge these employees by providing extra compensation as hazard pay. We wish we'd do that and consider it. Thank you. Stay safe.
Great, thank you, Chris. Which brings us to, do we have a PTA council report? I don't see Claudia. I know Erin Inatsugoo's here. Erin, are you here as a PTA council rep, or? Do we have, no one is.
I, I am not. I'm just here as a parent.
Okay, so we don't have a PTA council report. If Claudia does show up, we will hear from her then. Superintendent's report, Dr. Droudie.
Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I think I'm gonna use this opportunity more or less as an update as to where things are right now. So I have a longer list of things that I'm gonna kind of state. And for those of you who think they're gonna try to capture all of what I'm saying, all of this is gonna be provided either on a website or in a letter coming, coming out soon. But I wanted to kind of test based on what this, what, what, what the most recent developments have been. Today, the state superintendent of public instruction, Tony Thurman, released information that stated the following, in quote, "Due to recurrent safety concerns and need for ongoing social distancing, it currently appears that our students will not be able to return to school campuses before the end of the school year." This is not, this is no way to suggest that school is over for this year, but to rather, but rather that we should put all efforts into strengthening our delivery of education through distance learning. So, essentially, they're saying that chances are we're not gonna be coming back the rest of the year. We have anticipated this as a district leadership team and principals and, and as a result, we have been preparing to make sure that we are able to extend learning over to the end of the year. As a result, we took, we have taken the following measures. We have acquired information of our families as to who does not have a computer or a device and wifi. And as of yesterday, I believe we distributed over 780 computers to families who needed that support. We have secured or purchased wifi hotspots for those that need wifi, and I believe it's coming in this week. And also, we have coordinated with companies around that are volunteering their support and providing wifi to our families. So, so those efforts are taken. All of that is because we, we have to be able to deliver instruction. We think online is probably the best way to do this. So, once, we believe that, once all of our students have computers and our families have computers, then we can then really work towards strengthening our delivery model for, for, for our education services. We continue to serve lunch and breakfast to our students. Thank you to the cafeteria staff for doing what they're doing, but we will continue that process throughout the year. Right now, we're averaging about 300 students that are coming to pick up lunch and breakfast. And we are going on spring break next, the next two weeks, but we will continue the ceremony of lunch and breakfast, except for the two holidays that, that are, that fall within the spring break. The district ed services team and principals have established protocols for distance learning. I think we worked the last two weeks to really try to make sure that there's some semblance of routine for our families. We also recognize that we have families at home with, with parents at home that also have their own work, so we're trying to make sure that we're able to meet the needs of all. So, including our staff who also have family at home. So we've worked collaboratively with the, with the CTA and different people to make sure that we're able to establish protocols for our, for our distance learning. So, each school is probably gonna look a little different, but the idea that there is some kind of interaction with the teacher, the live interaction with teachers available, that's information that's gonna be communicated out there. There's also two different forms of delivering instruction. It can be live, which is something called synchronous, live, or asynchronous, meaning taped and delivered in that way. So, the combination of that with some possible packets that are, to particular, a lower level school, like kindergarten, first graders, teachers continue to kind of deploy some of those. So, all of that information is on the website. The ed services created a website to really make sure that questions like that are answered. And each principal, if they have not already, should be communicating that information about the routines this week before we go on spring break. So, 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 so there's information coming from district office as well as the sites. And we're also monitoring how much we bombard our families with information. So, so we're trying to make sure we're real careful with that as well. I'm sure there are lingering questions around grading, transcripts, college applications, SATs, AP testing, just a lot of things that I'm sure particularly high school students are concerned about and families are concerned about. We are receiving guidance from, from the government, from the state government about how we process grading. And I believe the UCs and CSU's weighed in this week, actually today. And so they gave us some guidance. So, we're going to work together with other superintendents and other counties to make sure that the grading is consistent throughout the nation, because we, as we know, grading impacts who goes to college, who doesn't. So this just can't be a unilateral decision. It has to be a countrywide decision. Right? So, so, so that's why we have to have the agencies weighing on this. So, more information will come on that. As I mentioned, there's a website dedicated to help answer some of these questions, so I urge all families to always log on to there. We'll do our best to continue to communicate as we come, come to conclusions of some of these, some of these answers. The grading will probably look different in the elementary, middle and high, because the stakes are just different. So, so please be on the lookout for that. Uh, I feel for our high school graduating class. I mean, this is supposed to be a time of their life where they say hang out with their friends and, and, and getting ready to go off to their life and all that, so I do feel for them. I have a high school senior. So, I, I'm feeling this through a parent as well. So, we're, we're going to be engaging conversations with the high school principals just around how we honor our graduating class. Whether, some, many ideas are floating around. Other districts are saying that we will postpone graduation ceremonies to the summertime, or even winter break when people come back from college and so on, or even next spring. That's, that's, those are options people are throwing around. There's ideas of virtual graduations or online graduations taking place. So, right now, we really have to kind of start thinking about what are we gonna do? And, and we'll start engaging the high school principals, who I know are engaging their high school students right now about some possibilities. So, more information will come on that as well. I want to reiterate that business, education is still continuing. Although we are physically closed for people to come to class, we are still educating students. District office staff is still working. Those of you, those that have essential duties onsite are coming, and we appreciate that. And those that are not coming onsite are working remotely. So when we say closed school, we don't mean school is closed. We're just saying it looks different. And so, we're still continuing with business of educating the students. And then, and then spring break is coming. This week, we're gonna try to equip everybody with enough information so we can all relax over spring break. So, I know the staff needs it, I know the students need it. So we have two weeks for everybody to kind of get together with their families and, and get connected. And then, when they come back, we'll be, we'll be 100% running, so, towards, towards the finish line. So, I hope that everybody does take the time to, 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 to not be too anxious over the two, two weeks. Like I said, we'll try to give people information so that way they can go, go and be with their families. And lastly, I recognize that a week. And lastly, I recognize that, or we recognize that this is a very difficult time for our students, parents, and community and staff as well. Everyone is doing their best, what they have. We will be responsive to people's educational needs and questions as best we can while we continue to educate our students academically and socially emotionally. I just ask that everybody, to everybody to exercise patience, restraint, and empathy for all situations. Because this isn't easy for everyone. And I, and I think if we operate in that way, we'll get through this much, much, much better and a more healthier way. So with that, that concludes the superintendent report.
Great, thank you, Ben. I have a couple, I have a couple of board members who just have some clarifying questions. I do want to remind the board. I know last, last meeting, we all got really sidetracked during superintendent's report. If we could, this question is directly attached to that. If not, we can do it later on in the meeting. So I'd like to call on Oscar, who has a question that's directly related to Ben's report.
Yeah, thank you, Ben. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks a lot for your report. Are we prioritizing the computers for high school students? Or is there any, any level of prioritization for the computer handouts?
We were actually, we were, we were better equipped at the high schools before all of this started. That's why they're farther ahead in their planning. But there is no priority. We're saying every student who needs a computer needs, will get a computer.
Okay, and then, you know, the question of accountability. You know, how, how do we hold sort of students accountable? It does lead to the question of like grading. But, and I know we don't have, you know, a definitive answer on that yet. But in how, how we're holding students accountable. I, I saw a report in the LA Times about Los Angeles Unified School District, about how many students were not being responsive and so forth. Do we know that data? Do we know if students are not responding to online class requirements? And how many have not checked in, especially like at the secondary level?
My understanding, I think we, we as a principal's cohort discussed that question. I don't have the exact figures, but I believe Mr. Miller and Shelton both agreed that, both believe that our rate of interactions is the most high rate in the unified. But there are students that have, we have not, that have not checked in. So our staff is working hard to make sure that we identify why, why somebody's not checking in. And, and I can just imagine this situation being tough, because you, you do have families out there. Parents probably lost jobs and people are probably concerned about rent and, and all of that. So we don't want to continue to add to the, to the anxiety. I think what we're, as we discussed the grading, we don't want it to be punitive for sure.
Yeah.
We don't want it to be punitive. So, so it's going to be where somebody can improve their grades. I believe the UCs today authorize a pass fail option for them. So right now, we have to get together to solidify all of that. And then we're going to give information out to the families pretty soon. So, but we need the UCs and CSUs to weigh in on what their thoughts on, on that regard. So, but we do not want this thing to be punitive. We're not going to, we're not going to chase anybody down, try to punish. We're going to try to continue to just encourage people to continue their learning as best we can. And if we need to provide social emotional support through counseling and things like that, then, then we'll, we'll do that.
All right, thanks. Thanks so much, Ben. We have a PTA council that just was able to log in. So I'd like to just hop back real quick, if you could, and have Claudia Sizer present about a PTA council report. Claudia? Can we unmute Claudia? Claudia Sizer, I'm looking. I unmuted Claudia, hi.
Hi, John, thank you. Sorry, sorry, we got stuck cooking dinner for the fifth time tonight. So just wanted to give a quick report. There's unfortunately not much since we, school closed. But just want to let you know that PTAs have, let's see where to start. Okay, so PTAs have gotten the approval from, everything kind of went to a freezing halt when schools closed. So, but we have now received the okay from state to continue having virtual meetings up until June 30th. And I have directed all the units to do so, since we are coming into election time for their new slates for the upcoming year. So they are doing that. They will continue to do as little business as they can. Basically, all their financial stuff will have to be going through still. So that's what they will be working on. As with, as PTA council, we are working, we have our community concerns VP Patty Braun, working with the community and our PTA units to try to, and Gail Pinsker, to try to figure out the needs of our communities and how we can partner with some of the community partners that want to connect with us and our, and our families. And we're still kind of in the process of figuring out what school need, what each school communities need and vice versa, as what these community partners can provide for us. So we've sent, sent out communication to our unit presidents from all the schools so they can kind of get out the word to their communities. And we will work with them alongside with them. Let's see what else have we been doing. You know, I, I'm just, we have had these meetings. I think you were on our meetings. Everyone's really kind of working diligently, trying to help our kids, you know, to try to get used to and, and try this new learn, long distance learning, which is something new and, and different for everyone. But I think everyone's coping or trying to. So I think we're trying to just be available to, to help them in any, in any way possible. So I think that's, that's about it that I have for you guys.
Thank you, Claudia, and good luck with dinner.
For my fifth dinner, thank you.
There'll be three more coming, right?
I know. It's only, it's only six.
Thanks, Claudia.
Okay.
Which brings us to consent. Does anybody have anything they need pulled from consent?
I move consent.
So moved by Richard, do I have a second?
I have one.
Oscar?
Second, yeah, but I, I do have a couple of questions on, on, on some of the consent items, on the purchase orders.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask now?
Um, yeah.
Okay, so just really quick on the, the contracts for, for all the, like Raptor, Harris computer, those, 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 any, any contract where, where people are gathering data. There's been concern in the community, you know, I've talked to parents who've called regarding the, you know, these, these contracts and what's included in terms of like protecting data, protecting privacy and stuff like that. Can, can we, can someone, can staff look, give to the board like that specific language in those contracts so that we can assure people that that data is being protected?
We can ask again. I remember we had a, we had a pretty thorough presentation on it. But maybe this would be a, would this be Carrie who can maybe remind us how that all played out or?
Yeah, yeah, we can, we, we did have a presentation on this. I know Marco said a few things here a little bit, and Carrie possibly. But we can certainly go back and give you guys that presentation again in a Friday memo.
Yeah, just for, for any of the new contracts, like, you know, I see the Harris computer and Kajit or whatever. And anyway, just any, any contract dealing with student data. If we can just get assurances from staff, you know, that, that we're flagging the, the language on those contracts, so that we're protecting student data.
Maybe, okay. Want to say something about that or?
Harris is actually our old QSS, our old financial system. So we kind of got to keep that. It's, it's not a new contract. It's just a continuing contractor at this moment. It has all our old financial system information on it at this moment.
Okay. Great. Are there any other questions on consent?
No.
Okay, so I, I had it moved by Richard. I had it seconded by Oscar. I'll do a roll call vote. Richard? Craig? Maria? Oscar?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Going through, I see Mia.
Yes.
I see Ralph.
Yes.
Kimya. And I'm a yes, so consent is so moved. Brings us to general public comment. Looking at the sign up, I do not see any general comments, Sarah. I see all our comments are for agenda items. So if that is the case, I'm going to let you just.
Yeah. Let me, I, I think you're right. They all look like they're for item.
All for item K7.
That's what I see.
So there are no general public comments at this time, which brings us to discussion items of which we do not have any, major action items. So our first action item is adopt resolution 1936, recognizing the week of the young child. And I'm hoping I vamped long enough for Lori to pull that up on her desktop so she can read us the resolution. Lori?
Yeah, I have to unmute myself, sorry. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education joins the National Association for the Education of Young Children in proclaiming April 11th to 17th, 2020, as the week of the young child and encourages residents of our community to support the needs of our young children.
Wonderful. Do I have a motion? I see Maria. I seconded by Oscar. We're going to go roll call. Let's go the other way on the board this time. Kimya? Ralph?
Yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Oscar?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
EJ? Craig? Maria, and I'm a yes, that is seven. Which brings us to K2, adopt resolution number 1937, recognizing adult education week, April 6th through 10th.
Ready? Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education proclaims the week of April 6th to April 10th, 2020, as California Adult Education Week in the SMMUSD community.
Great. Do I have a, so moved by Maria, seconded by Richard? Roll call vote. Yes, sir.
Just, you know, for both of these, I think it's, something should be said, you know, about the, the young child and the old child. You know, adult education has been stopped in its tracks. You know, SMC shut down the Emeritus College. I don't know if there's any online distance learning in it at this point.
No, no, let me clarify. It hasn't. We had a meeting yesterday.
No meetings.
Emeritus is open by Zoom.
On Zoom, right. But in both, and then, and then for, you know, our youngest preschools are, everybody's operating through Zoom, not as necessarily as robust as, as we are, you know, K-12. But just how important everything that we, that we really, really do in, you know, in terms of providing opportunities for, for all ages to learn and get in the hang of, of different ways of learning, because I think it's, it's definitely going to be with us for a long time. So really, we should be doing these, and to how protective we need to be of, of our young and our old and, and the incredible efforts people are doing to keep, you know, keep all this in place. As Marie has said, you know, there, there is distance learning going, I guess, from eight, you know, from three to 80 or 90 or whatever age.
Yeah, that's a great point, Ralph, because we so often, you know, get focused on our K-12 world. And we remember that there is life before K and there is life after 12. And I appreciate you bringing that up.
Thank you.
So let's, a roll call. Richard? Craig? Maria? Oscar? Lori?
Yes.
Mia?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Kimya? And I'm a yes, that is seven now. Brings us to our next resolution. I'm going to kick this one over to Maria, if she has this up on her computer, which is adopt resolution number 1938, recognizing Dolores Huerta's birthday, which is April 10th.
Thank you so much. I brought, I actually brought it up a few years ago, so I'm honored to read this. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified District Board of Education does hereby adopt this resolution to honor a national civil rights and labor leader in America. Be it further resolved that the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education calls upon all schools and all members of our community to honor the legacy of Dolores Clara Fernandez Huerta as a symbol of hope, equity, and social justice to all. And just to let you know that, we wish her a happy birthday. She turns 90 on April the 10th. I saw her about a month ago, and she was looking better than me. So she is great. May God give her long, more, more years to come. And thank you so much for all the work she has done, and she was my role model, so.
And to Ralph's point, especially with our, the elders in our community, it's a really hard time, because we cannot communicate with them the way we want to. Let's make sure we don't forget them, Dolores Huerta and, and many others. So do I have a motion? I assume Maria has made the motion, seconded by Oscar. Roll call vote. Richard? Craig? Maria? Oscar? Lori? Kimya? Ralph, Mia, and I'm a yes as well. Which brings us to number four, resolution 1939. Resolution of the Board of Education of the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District, authorizing the issuance and sale of 2020 refunding general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $90,000, approving related documents and actions. We actually have staff here to speak to this.
90 million, John.
I said, did I say 90 million?
No, you said 90,000.
Well, yeah, that's, I just, it's just a little zero, just a little zero mistake. Thank you, Ralph. I appreciate that. We do have staff to speak to this. Before we, before we do that, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Maria, seconded by Richard. I now, we do have, John Isom is here, Courtney Jones is here. Stephen Carrier here. Do you have any questions for staff about this? This is something that we have been doing all along when we see opportunities in the market to refinance our debt obligations and save our taxpayers money. This is another example of that. If we have questions, I welcome them. Lori, is that a question or a comment?
I, it was a comment, which is, I think you've got all those people there that someone ought to speak briefly to what we're doing and why. We're having a public meeting.
Great.
It should be spoken, especially since all those people are there, that's all.
Why don't we let Melody choose how we're going to talk about this topic?
Thank you. Let me say, wait a minute, that's my.
I know, I have you on the left of my screen. I'm like, oh, there's Melody.
Okay, so yeah, John Isom and Courtney Jones, everyone is with us. We also have FOC member Michael Creamer, that he dabbles in this in his life. And I shouldn't say dabble, this is what he does as a profession as well. And so he's very valuable to us as well. But I'm going to ask John Isom to actually speak to this. We do have a presentation, if I can ask Sarah to bring it up. It's super duper quick. I don't think it's going to take us forever. But at least it's got the numbers and the things that you can see. So it's not just somebody chattering in your ear at this point. Sarah, are you able to pull that up for us?
Yeah, one second.
Gotcha, thank you. And then John, are you ready?
Yeah, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great to be here, guys.
Yeah, while this is. Give Sarah just a couple more minutes, John, just a couple more seconds, so she gives us the thumbs up or whatever it takes, Sarah.
Yeah. Come on, computer.
John, you can, you can vamp, well, you can, you can talk to about the item.
Yeah, while, while this is getting pulled up, as, as you mentioned, John, this is something that the district has done frequently. Most recently, in 2019, last year, the opportunity was, interest rates were low. We locked in 15, over $15 million in savings for property taxpayers. And with the steep decline in interest rates the last couple of months, all of a sudden, we looked at bonds that previously were inefficient and were unable to be refunded. And all of a sudden, we saw an opportunity. We think we can save property taxpayers additional funds.
The presentation is up. If you want me to go through the slides, just let me know.
Yeah, you know, just to keep it brief, and I'm happy to refer to some of the, some of the other specifics. But maybe we could forward a few slides going forward, because this just basically tells us what we know, which is interest rates amid the, you know, global meltdown. And even prior to that, honestly, interest rates were on the decline. And when interest rates go down, just like on a home mortgage refi, you know, school districts and municipalities can refund outstanding bonds as well. So let's go forward a couple of more slides, just to get to the crux of it. Let's go to another one. This one is, if, sorry, go to, back to four. Go back one, there we go, thank you. So this is an interesting slide, because it actually just shows us, you know, basically this, and what has happened and, and how things have, have changed and have changed so much dramatically. But the crux of this is, is to show you. and, and how things have, have changed and have changed so much dramatically. Uh, but the crux of this is, is, is to show you how much money comes in to the municipal bond funds, uh, in the market, and how much money goes out. So for the first few months, uh, a lot of money was coming in. Usually that means more, uh, demand than there is supply. Uh, and then the reverse has happened the last couple of weeks where monies have been going out. That's been in part due to a couple of things, but most notably, it's been, you know, a redemption and liquidation of, of, of a number of funds, where people are, you know, basically getting into a cash position, and when they wanna get into cash, they liquidate, and when they liquidate, that means they sell. And so what's happened is that because of all of this, the selling of bonds, uh, and also because of a need for, for corporate bonds to be sold, we have a significant supply in the marketplace. And so what that's done is it's actually changed how much savings, uh, the district would be able to receive. And I'm gonna go a, a quick compare and contrast and then point you in the right direction on the last slide. So the next slide shows what we shared with the FOC and what we were looking at by way of refunding opportunities. There's a lot of data here. I would ask you to focus on the green section. Uh, that's kind of the punchline highlighted by the first line where it says savings. And you can see the different columns represent four different outstanding bonds that if refunded under the savings, we could save upwards of six point four six nine million dollars, and that's the far right column when you look at the total. So that's one of the, 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 the key data points on this particular slide. Another key data point is what's called the percentage savings of refunded bonds. So that's the percent, it's the third line item in green. And each of those represents a financial calculation that just says, does this make sense? How financially efficient is it? How much savings are we truly generating to taxpayers? Because you can't just refund bonds every year. You, you do want to be a little bit choosy when you can, and, and when you do pursue those bonds. Government Finance Officers Association says if you can get three percent or minimum, usually it makes sense. Under these circumstances, we think we should get even higher. Go, go back to slide five, please. I think we maybe slipped forward. And so you can see on the percentage savings of refunding bonds going left to right, four point five seven percent, five point two, eleven point three, nine point five. So by one standard, they all make sense, but by a higher standard that came out of the FOC meeting, we said, you know, we should get at least fifty percent savings efficiency. And that's that bottom line, uh, item of the green box there. And you can see in that scenario, the two thousand and thirteens aren't that efficient when we're talking about this calculation. Uh, the series, two thousand and six, series D is just above the fifty percent, and then the election two thousand B are, are a little bit more comfortably above that fifty percent, um, fifty percent mark. That's where we were March of two thousand and ten. Now I'll show you the power and, uh, volatility in this. The next slide on slide six. Okay, so we, we've, it's the same data, but now we fast forward to today, April first. Now, if you look at those savings, they're all negative. So right now, if we were to try to price these bonds today, we could save no money at all. If you look at percentage savings of refunded bonds, the third line, the, again, all negatives. None of those are even at the three percent level. If you look at the savings efficiency, again, none of those are at fifty percent. However, this is again due to a lot of volatility in the marketplace, an influx of corporate bonds, uh, and, and increased supply as they're taking up some of the taxable space that these would normally benefit from. So today, it doesn't make sense to do. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, it did. Uh, we're optimistic or hopeful that it will going forward. But ultimately, what has to happen, and let's skip two slides to slide eight in conclusion on this. What has to happen here, and you can see this is an interesting dynamic. It's a pretty basic table that has three components. One is the ten-year treasury, US treasuries, and that's represented in blue. And orange is this little escrow yield and what kind of the slugs rate is, because when you do these refundings, you take the monies from the bond sale, you put them into an escrow account, and they interest. And then at the, at the call date or at the future, uh, period in time, uh, that escrow gets liquidated, and you're gonna have a difference between what you're earning in interest and what you're paying in interest. So you can see between, you know, March tenth and today, neither of those numbers have really moved. So what has changed? And that's the gray, uh, which is represented by the spread or the difference between the treasuries and the taxable. And what it means is that investors are, you know, back on March tenth said, hey, I can have a spread of, you know, one point three percent or one point three eight percent. And now they're saying, you know what, there's so much out there. I can be choosy. There's a spread of, of almost two point, uh, you know, two point three percent. So we're about a hundred basis points away in, in minimizing or, or lowering or tightening that spread for us to be able to actually see this deal happening. But it's not because of the treasury. It's not because of the escrow yield. It's just a, it's a dynamic of, of volatility. And it's a dynamic between these, this supply in, in, in taxable bonds that are out there. But as it relates to the resolution that you have in front of you, uh, our recommendation is to say, you know, there's, there's, there's no harm in proceeding and saying, yeah, we want to take advantage of the opportunity if it presents itself. And this is one key administrative step, that if the resolution is adopted, then we know we can get rated. We know we can get the bond sold, again, provided those fifty percent financial efficiencies set forth by the FOC. And we can save taxpayers some real, uh, some real money. So we still think there's an opportunity. Uh, it's just not at this moment. But it could be next week. It could be in two weeks. It could be in a month. Um, your resolution frankly has a shelf life of about six months. So we really have, you know, a few months to kind of monitor things. Uh, but that's what is in front of you, uh, this evening.
Great. So just to sum that up, John, from what I'm hearing from you is, it, it, the recommendation from staff right now is we would not be going to market in this climate, but staff would like if board would approve the resolution that would allow us to go to market if market conditions shift in a more favorable, into the favorable parameters that have already been set by the FOC and, and other those entities. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any que, I'm looking around to see if there are questions or comments from my colleagues.
I didn't know if Michael Weatherly wanted to, I'm sorry, Michael Kramer wanted to weigh in or not.
If, if, Michael, if you're here, I would love it if you would weigh in.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks, Michael.
Great, thanks. So the FOC had a pretty good discussion about this at our meeting, um, about three weeks ago. And, um, it's amazing how much has changed in three weeks in the financial markets. It feels like three months. Uh, John probably agrees with that too, John Isom. But a lot has changed. Rates have gone up quite a bit. Stocks have been hammered. Um, but back to this discussion. So the district has a debt policy that was adopted about, uh, three years ago. We've talked about the FOC suggesting revisions to that. It would be more specific, at least in terms of these bond refinancings, putting in more parameters, um, kind of threshold levels, uh, that would, it'd provide more guidance when to execute these refundings. Um, you know, one of those metrics is that net present value savings minimum, um, three to five percent is the standard. And then again, that refunding efficiency, uh, was discussed a lot at the FOC meeting, and that's looking for that fifty percent minimum. That's the minimum. We'd like to see more, because, uh, these particular refundings, these all have, um, long escrows. So the period between when the bonds are actually priced and enclosed, to when those other bonds are actually, uh, go away and are called can be years. And that's on one of those slides that John showed. So during that period of time, you know, the district is borrowing at a rate that's much higher than those funds are being vested at, invested at. So there's a cost to carry there that's substantial with those longer escrows. So if interest rates were to stay the same, and we just wait it out and shorten up the term that escrow, the savings will go up. So the concern of ours is just that the district does have, have these options to refund these bonds. We wanna make sure that we can do it at the best time. We're all in favor of savings, taxpayer savings, but we don't wanna waste opportunity by doing something, um, too soon. So we're definitely in favor of authorizing now for refunding to happen when market conditions improve. I think we would need to see at least a one percent improvement in market conditions to get back to where levels were, um, on March ninth or March tenth. So hopefully we'll get there soon.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. If, if I could just throw in one more, you know, one more feature, uh, there is some flexibility in
John, you are, you are trapped underwater. Can you start over with John, John Isom, John Isom, John Isom? We deny here anything you said after there is some flexibility. Melody is gonna address it.
Can you hear me now?
Sure. Try one last time.
Okay, apologies for being underwater. One of the things that I was saying was that back in the Great Recession, there were opportunities that, when we were doing refundings with school districts, some took the opportunity, others said, eh, it's okay. Uh, in that we have an ability to structure these bonds and provide savings when the district might want to provide the savings. For example, in a most simplistic term, what we've got in front of the district and what we've looked at with the FOC assumes kind of a level debt service, meaning we'll save a little bit of money every year for the next twenty years, call it. Districts can also backload the savings, which means I'm not gonna give you any benefit for the next eighteen years, but then maybe I cut off last two years of borrowing, or you can frontload the savings. And that's what a few districts did, uh, during the Great Recession, as they said, you know what? I'm actually not gonna lower anyone's taxes in year twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, or twenty-three or beyond. Uh, but maybe I can jam all of the benefit in the next year or two. Uh, so that might be just something for, for staff and the board to give some consideration to, that when these refundings are done, we have an ability to kind of move that savings benefit where it might be the most effective or the most helpful. And given the economic times that we're in, maybe something that is front-loaded would be something that we wanna consider. So just one other, you know, thing that hopefully we can, can come back with either direction or a report on how we were able to best save taxpayers' money in the district.
Great, thank you. I, um, question for Melody, um, I guess, John and team. So if we were to pass this resolution, all that we would be doing is be giving the flexibility to go to market if we were to choose to. Melody, what would be the, the process of going to market? And how would the board be able to give the thumbs up or thumbs down at that point?
I, you know what, I think I'm gonna pass that one back to John real quick.
Yeah, at, at this point, John, it, it, the board, this, the action, this would be the thumbs up, uh, based on the parameters that were already established by the FOC, which would be.
And the parameters we're talking about are that fifty-five percent threshold?
The fifty percent efficiency, uh, threshold. So if we can achieve fifty percent, uh, minimum, then there would be the green light to proceed. Doesn't necessarily mean that we would, we would do that. There might be other extenuating circumstances whereby we would have a discussion and say, you know what, I know we're at fifty-one percent, but I think we should wait. Uh, but if we can hit fifty percent, then we know we've got the green light from the board. So that, tonight would be the thumbs up to give that green light under those parameters already established.
John, John, can you simulate what hitting, what, what are the factors, the parameters for involving calculating that efficiency?
Yeah, it's just, you know, i- i- going back to that presentation that was up on the board there, um, if you looked at that present, if, I don't know if it was page six, can we get that back up? And if we can go, I think it's page six. Essentially, this is, uh, excuse me, five apologies. So yeah, so as, as was mentioned, uh, I think maybe Michael was saying, if we get a hundred basis point improvement, meaning if, if rates or, or rather, if the spread from treasuries to taxable improved by a hundred basis points or one percent, we would be awfully close to hitting the fifty percent efficiency for each of these four. So on this particular slide, slide five, the last line item in green, the savings efficiency, that's our bogey. So if we can hit fifty percent or better, and in this particular version, three of those four, we would achieve that efficiency. We would then say, all right, we have enough. If there's no other extenuating circumstances, let's pull the trigger and refund the series two thousand and six, series D, and the two thousand and twelve, series A and B. If rates improved a little bit more, uh, than the two thousand and thirteen general obligation refunding bonds would also be a candidate. So it's that calculation where essentially our savings is greater than the negative arbitrage, um, just generated by that long escrow that Michael brought up before. Uh, that's what we're, we're ultimately hoping to achieve. So need about a hundred basis points or one percent improvement, uh, from where the spread is now into that fifty percent plus savings efficiency.
I'm looking at the board. This is really tricky. Mike, uh, Mike Kramer? Because we were all at that FOC meeting where we, you, me, Lori, and, uh, and Craig were there as well. Does this? Because I kind of wish I knew earlier, and this could be my own failing not to read the market properly, I kind of wish that we were this far underwater currently. Um, not that it would really change the, 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 the numbers that much. So Mike, my question for you is, does this seem to capture the spirit of the FOC approach to future refunding of, of the, of these obligations, the general obligation bonds, uh, with this resolution?
It does. It does.
I'm just making sure that, that our conversation there is the same conversation that we're having now. So I appreciate that.
It is.
Okay. Do we have any more questions? Are we ready to move on to the motion?
John, do you, do you want me to add a little extra perspective, or do you think we're good here?
Um, I, I actually would love you to add a little extra perspective.
Okay, so from where I sit, the, you refund bonds, it's like a mortgage. You refund bonds when you can reduce how much you have to pay to the bank because interest rates have changed, right? You refinance, rather. So the tricky part, just like with a mortgage, is if you refinance today and interest rates keep going down, well, you could have done it better in a month or a year, but then they keep going down and you can refinance again. So the, the question really is not, should we refinance? Because that's a good thing to do when you can. It's, do we do it in this moment, or do we wait longer? And of course, nobody knows the answer to this question, which is why we asked the FOC to create a set of parameters to make clear decisions as to at what threshold we do this. And we're, they're telling us, these are the current thresholds at which they recommend we refi, we refinance. So we're just saying, okay, if we can make the taxpayer, save the taxpayer some money, we're at the thresholds here that we think makes sense to do that, so let's do that. So from my point of view, I'm in favor of this. I think it's the right thing to do. It's, it's not an exact science, but at the end of the day, we're saving the taxpayers' money on a carefully thought-out set of parameters to maximize the benefit to them in an uncertain environment. If, if we did it a little less, we might never refinance, and they might not get anything because interest rates didn't get there. And if we did a little more, and we got lucky, they'd get a little more. But it's a trade-off, and, you know, the FOC, who actually has several people who are highly skilled in this, and a number of people who are very good with finances, have come up with these numbers, and I'm good with what they've done.
Yeah, I appreciate it. It's, it's a good reframing of the discussion we had. It was a long discussion. So seeing no further, uh, comments, we have the motion seconded. Uh, I'll do a roll call on this. Richard? Craig? Maria? Those are all yeses so far. Oscar? Yes, Lori?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Ralph?
Yes.
Mia, are you still with us?
Yeah, I'm still with you.
Okay. I can't see you though, so do you yes or no?
Here, let me, yes.
Thank you so much. Kimya, are you with us? Kimya, I'm not sure she's still with us, and I'm a yes on this as well. So that is. So that is, that is approved unanimously. Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. Which now brings us to item five, title one, schoolwide program waiver. And I believe is Dr. Mora introducing this?
Yes.
Hi, Dr. Mora.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see all of you. I hope that you're safe and well. It's a pleasure for me to introduce Sam Koshy, our Director of Assessment, Research and Evaluation, who will be introducing and discussing this item with all of you this evening. So Sam?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Sarah, are you gonna make me a co-host so I can share or?
Well, and by the way, Sarah, are we really covering items K5 and six at the same time here? Or are we just doing one at a time?
They're about two different schools. McKinley is to do their waiver and John Adams is to add.
Okay, so, but we're, so right now, the first one is going to be K5. Correct?
This one is on-
I thought it was on case six. That's why I'm confused.
The staff, staff report includes both items.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought.
So our recommendation will be for both.
So let's combine both items and have Sam do his presentation. Thank you.
All right, so, good evening, Dr. Drati and members of the board. So I just wanted to go over briefly title one and we'll start with a little bit of background. So title one is one of our four major federal education formula grant programs. Funds are allocated based on federal census poverty data, which is even more pivotal, given that today is our National Census Day. So this is how we get our data for title one. SMMUSD uses the free or reduced price lunch program eligibility as the poverty measure. So while poverty rate determines allocation was of funds, remember that services are actually based on academic needs. So when we look at title one programs, there are two types of programs. One is a schoolwide program and the other one, what we refer to as a targeted assistance program. So a schoolwide program is a comprehensive reform strategy designed to upgrade the entire educational program in a title one school as opposed to only targeting services to eligible students identified by the school as failing or at most risk of failing to meet the state's academic content standards. School receiving title one funds is eligible to operate a title one, a schoolwide program if they meet the 40% threshold. So we're talking about at least 40% of the students served by the school living at or near poverty. And the other way you can get around this is if the CDE, the California Department of Education, waives the 40% threshold. So today, when we are talking about McKinley, we are requesting the schoolwide program waiver here because if the local governing board approves such a request, the CDE will go ahead and approve the waiver. When it comes to school allocations, districts have the option to rank school poverty measures by grade span. And this is instead of using district wide ranking when determining which schools receives title one fundings and which one doesn't. In an effort to maximize the impact, our district has historically only ranked elementary schools by poverty rate to determine which schools to serve. And then in an effort, what this did was it left out one of our middle schools. So John Adams Middle School has been meeting the 40% threshold to run a schoolwide program for the past few years. So it comes to two recommendations today from staff. The first being that the Board of Education approved the request for a waiver for McKinley to run a schoolwide title one program for the 2020-21 school year. And the second recommendation is if you could authorize staff to include middle school sites in the grade span groupings used to determine which schools will receive title one so that JAMS or John Adams can receive title one funds going forward.
Great, thank you very much, Sam. Do we have questions from the board on this presentation?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ray. I can't see the screen now, so I'll just trust you guys to be polite. Ralph?
I guess my question probably for, for Sam or, or Dr. Mora. What, what does this change at John Adams?
They get fun-
Are things going to be done differently?
So they'll get an allocation of title one funds. So we have a pot of money that we get from the federal government that they will have access to now to meet the needs of their lowest achieving students. And then I have Dr. Mora.
Will there be the same pot of money? So we're now going to spread it over, and John Adams is larger, so we're, they're going to get half the money, basically? I'm just-
It's not half, but they do get money.
They will get 40% of the money that's now going to four elementary schools.
So no, not in that regard. So they will get the larger-
Are they getting money now? No, not.
They're not.
So there's three grade levels, six through eight. So let's say it's 40% of 900 kids, it's 360 kids. We've got four elementary schools or it's like 2,000 kids who were-
So, yeah, John Adams probably, we're looking at our students.
Forget about, forget about a third of the title one funds. So how does this, it positively infects John Adams, but it has some, an effect on the elementary schools. They're going to have less money for schoolwide program, correct?
That is, that is correct. Also, what, the reason why we're looking at this and proposing this is because we've noticed historically looking at the numbers at McKinley specifically, there, this year, we're able to reach 35% title one through the free and reduced lunch count. But they've been, the demographics have been shifting year to year. So this is, I believe, our second year that we're requesting a waiver in order for them to run a schoolwide program because they are continuing to be below the threshold of 40%. So under, understanding and taking that into account and, and then reflecting on the needs of our middle school, John Adams, which is our, the feeder pathway as well. We're seeing that there is a need there to also be able to provide additional resources to provoke, to support at promise students and provide additional programs beyond what is currently being offered at, at JAMS. But yes, you are correct. There is, it's going to be dispersed across all of this, all of those schools that are going to now be a part of the title one program.
Right, so there'll be some changes at the elementary schools because they'll have less, less funds to run their title, to do their title one schoolwide programs.
Well, I wouldn't look at it that way. I, I, I'm confident that Dr. Mora and your staff will kind of look at it, that how do we maximize what we have with the money with, with, let's say, John Adams Middle School and the four elementary schools. Because sometimes we will get positive just for, for the elementary side of the house and then some that are just middle school, right? So I'm hoping that they will maximize the efforts being made because I know that middle, John Adams has, has a lot of need. And I know in the past, we've always left John Adams out of this pot because they wanted to maximize it at the elementary school.
Well, it's been, Maria, I wasn't putting a negative spin. I was just wanting to, you know, make sure I, I and the community fully understood what we're doing. And it's true that the, the school board, whenever it was 30, 40 years ago, made the decision to use title one funds whenever this program came into effect at the elementary level. So we're making a change to include the middle, middle schools. And agreed, there is a tremendous need at, at, at the middle school level for the same kids. We're just going to have to adjust, be more efficient, to use those terms again for, you know, how we're providing services to all the students of need in the program.
Craig, Craig and Oscar who are in the queue. Craig and Oscar?
I was just going to say what Maria said. I mean, to me, this is, this is equitable to make sure that the funds get to all the kids in need. Accepting Ralph's point that, yeah, that's going to mean that some kids get less, but it's, you know, we've got needs across the board. So I'm, I'm with Maria on this. Not that Ralph, that you were saying we shouldn't, but I think that's, I support the recommendation.
Oscar?
Yeah, no, I think it's pretty clear McKinley doesn't qualify. But are there any currently funded programs at McKinley with this funding that would be jeopardized if we approve this waiver?
So the waiver will allow McKinley to continue running a schoolwide program. So the funds that they get, they will be able to utilize to support the entire programming that's been offered. That's why we're requesting the waivers so that we can, so that McKinley can still function under that, that umbrella, right? At some point, if the, if the, if the numbers continue to decrease or do not increase, then they will be moving into what's called a targeted assistance program. But we are requesting the waiver so that they still have that flexibility for this coming year as they plan to continue to inform families about the importance of, of applying for the free and reduced lunch program, even if they choose to not use it. What are the benefits? Not only do they get a, a healthy meal, but it also provides us with the necessary resources to support the, our students and our families to the highest level possible through these, through this additional resource. So I know Dr. Benjamin worked really, really diligently and closely with her team and her families to make sure that we were getting accurate information in regards to the needs of the school per this measure, right? And then I know she will greatly appreciate being able to, to run a schoolwide program for an additional, for at least an additional year and then prepare for if she were to, if, if we were, were to go to a targeted assistance program model in future years. But at this point, we want her, we want that school to have the opportunity to run the similar programs that they had with some adjustments because the funding will, will be different.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Mora. I just want to make a quick comment too. I think this is a, this item is a great example of why we are having continuing board meetings at this time and the work that staff is doing. This is not an item that is, that is on, on the forefront right now, but it shows you the work that staff is doing. And the, and the board is bringing up great questions. Ralph and Oscar bring up great points. And I think it's a great example of, I, I trust Dr. Mora, I trust our staff to, to make these decisions on the, on the, on the betterment of all of our students. And I, this, this is why we still are having board meetings for items like this, so we keep working.
Another question?
Okay.
For Dr. Mora. So I think it's relevant. So if we are going to move somewhat to targeted assistance program, what about, there, there is one or two other schools, elementary schools that have numbers of children, you know, poverty in the low 30s. Would we then be, you know, developing a program that was, would address students in, in other schools that are, you know, around the 30% level in the future?
So we would be, we would need to take a look at that particular and have that conversation in the future in relationship to what's the span. At this point, it would be looking at any school that's between 35 and 39 to, to run a targeted assistance school. But we're not in, and that's, that's one of the reasons why we're asking to see if we can have McKinley do a school, schoolwide this year with the understanding that if things don't change, we're going to have to move to targeted assistance for that, for that, because they're below the 40% threshold, but within a reasonable range of 35 to 39%. But that could, that can be something that we can then discuss further if we're seeing that schools are within, like, are they at 34? Are they, what, what is going to be that range? And then we need to be able to be consistent and move forward with that implementation.
Thank you. Is there a motion, John?
I'm good. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move the item. Is there a second?
Sure.
I see Maria with the second. Let's go. Richard? Craig? Maria? Oscar? Lori? Mia, you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
And you said yes? Yes, you're still here. Yes, you approved?
Yes, both.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Kimya, I think Kimya is no longer with us. Kimya?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Kimya. Appreciate that. So that is yes. Thank you so much, Dr. Mora. Thank you, Sam Koshy, for your work on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which brings us to item K7, public hearing measure R parcel tax.
Wait, did we have to take two separate votes on those? I think we did.
Oh, I thought we combined them into one. Do we need to, so-
I know, we would combine the staff report, but I think we need to, because they are asking for two different things.
Yeah, so.
So let's start over again. So, yeah, but the, but the way the agenda is written, I, the, the first one, K5, is McKinley?
Waiver.
Okay, so the first one is K5 McKinley waiver. I will still move this and Maria will still second it. Richard? Craig? Maria? Oscar? Lori?
Yes.
Ralph? Kimya? Mia?
Yes.
I didn't hear Kimya. Kimya?
Yes.
And Mia?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Thank you. So that's K5. Do I have a motion for K6? I see Maria and then Lori? Richard? Craig? Maria? Oscar? Lori?
Yes.
Kimya?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
I'm a yes. Thank you, Lori, for making sure we did that properly. I really appreciate it. Which now brings us to K7, which is the public hearing for the Measure R Parcel Tax. We have some public comments on this. Before we get to that, do we have anybody from staff who is introducing this item? Or are we going right to comment?
It's Melody.
You need, you need to take a vote to open the public hearing first.
Ah, so I'm, Richard, so moved, Maria seconded. So all, all in favor of opening the public meeting? Richard? Greg? Maria? Lori? Oscar? Ralph? Mia?
Yes.
Kimya?
Yes.
Great, thank you. So the public medium is now, public hearing is now open. And then Melody will introduce the item. Is that correct?
Yes, actually, I'm going to ask Gerardo Cruz, our Finance Director, to talk to this one because it has changed a little bit from what we normally put up. And normally, we just kind of run through this really quick and everything. But I think it's worth us going through just a few moments and having that conversation. Gerardo, are you available?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Gerardo.
Perfect. Good evening, Board. Gerardo Cruz, Director of Fiscal Services. We are going to spend a little more time on going over this item this year round. Looks like Melody mentioned, there were some changes that were added. If you go to your board item in the, in the board item, there is a link that says Propose Annual Plan. And that's just a summary overview of what the board has approved every year as well as the FOC. Part of the requirement of this approval is that the Measure R plan go to the Financial Oversight Committee for input on the expenditures. And in that meeting, Sarah, do I have the ability to share? You know, sorry.
I think you do.
Okay.
Let me know if not.
It says not, sorry.
Um, Richard, can you make you a co-host?
You are the co-host now, Gerardo.
Thank you.
I just did it. I'm sorry for the delay.
Thank you.
Thanks. One second. So part of that, oh, wrong screen. Are we able to see the Excel chart? Sorry, I can't tell.
That's a calendar.
We have a calendar.
That's your calendar, Gerardo.
Okay, sorry.
You're busy, my friend. Busy.
Technology, yay.
I did like your picture of Puerto Rico, though.
How about now?
Yeah, you have to blow it up a little bit.
Okay, perfect. So like I mentioned, in the FOC meeting, the, the item that was in the board item, the link, gave the overview of the entire budget as a whole. One of the things that we shared at the March 10th Financial Oversight Committee meeting was all the detail associated with that, and we did that in our public FOC meeting. One of the things that we, we went over the five criteria that the measure outlines. So there's the physical education component, the community services, technology, arts and music, as well as the library program. And as a whole, we see that we, we are spending around the same amount of money on Measure R, 6.406 versus 6.485 million in the new year. And so we've tried our best to have expenditures be directed towards these components that the Measure R Parcel Tax passed. We worked very- that the Measure R Parcel Tax passed. We worked very closely with Dr. Mora and her Director of Education Technology, Bertha Roman, to identify pieces that needed to be boosted in the Measure R programming. So if we just look at this top section here, we had a slight administrative cost increase due to the cost of our required audit of Measure R. So that slight increase is shown here in this 24.5 million versus the prior year of 23.5. The next section that you'll see as we scroll down is the arts and music section. This also had a slight decrease, and it's mostly due to the addition of the mariachi programming that we do in conjunction with our, in conjunction with our college. So we'll see that we went from 15.75 FTE to a total of 18.875. And you can see a slight decrease there. Again, the majority of that reason and the FTEs associated with that increase are because of the mariachi program. If we go down to the next section, which is our PE program, we have a change from 17 FTEs for last year versus the 22.375. And that is mostly attributed to an increase in physical activity specialists, which are spread around all of our school sites, with 14.625 FTE to 20 FTE. And the thought is probably for all of these increases in FTE, we're seeing a very slight increase in the cost of these positions. And one would think, well, I thought if there's a major increase in FTE, we should see the corresponding costs increase substantially as well. But one of the things that is curtailing the cost of this increase is, if you recall, the Board of Education did approve a retirement incentive last year. And so a lot of the more expensive people who held those positions did retire from the district. And so we have newer employees that are making less. And therefore, even though we see a substantial increase in FTEs, the corresponding cost is relatively small. So that's for the PE program. If we go down to the next section, which is the library program, this one actually has a decrease in FTE. It's going from 18.12 to 16.37. And that's mostly attributed to the library assistance. These are, believe it or not, actually vacancies that we've had during the end of this current year. And we've had a bit of a difficulty filling those. And so we're anticipating that we're going to start the year with those vacancies still remaining, knowing, or hoping rather, that we would actually increase once those positions are filled. If you continue on to the community service section, that has stayed the same with the one media technician for Barnum Hall at Santa Monica High School. If you go to the technology portion, we see that the FTEs remain the same for physicians filled. But there is an increase in maintenance agreements for a couple of hundred thousand. When we presented this information, I'm sorry. So this leaves us spending last year at Measure R, 6.406 million to 6.485 million in Measure R funds. When we presented this to the FOC, there were several, there were several questions that the FOC had, eight to be exact. But one of the larger questions was around the balance of Measure R funds that were used to preserve inadequate state funding. And it's a lot of money this year. If you're looking at the summary page that was linked in the Measure R board item, you can see that last year, we saw that the balance was 5.7 that went to preserve inadequate state funding. And this year, it's around an even 6 million. If you think about that, we're actually spending the same, actually more money on the Measure R program, but we're also increasing revenue for Measure R. Therefore, by default, the amount of money that goes to preserve inadequate state funding increases correspondingly. So that was a big piece that the FOC had questions on, and they requested several years of analysis since Measure R started so that they can see the trend. But they had a very well-rounded, eight questions that they asked during the meeting. And we are in the middle of responding to them for those. But nevertheless, they did move the item forward. So that concludes the report. I think you're muted.
Gerardo, can you send that?
Stop, stop, sorry, 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 sorry. We have public, I'm sorry, I was muted. We have public comments on the item. So why don't we do our public comments? And then we can have the board, board questions and comments, if that's cool.
I can run the timer for it.
Great, thank you. So we have, I see four public comments.
Do you want me to do it? Okay. Do you want to, John, are you going to do this?
I have.
Fine, or I'll do, whatever you want.
If you have it in front of you, go ahead.
I do.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead?
I think there might actually be three. One person wants to give a minute to one of the person.
That's right. One person has to do. Okay, there are actually four people turning in chits, but one of them has really turned in a shit so that her minute, assuming she is present on the Zoom meeting, can go to one of the other speakers. So the speakers are Sarah Barrett, Laura Ford, Roberta Brown, and then Jackie Stansbury, who really wants to give her minute to Laura Ford. So is Jackie Stansbury on the Zoom meeting? Sarah, can you tell that? Because I can't.
Yes, I see Jackie on the meeting.
I can do that. And if you say their names, I'll unmute the people.
Okay, so the first speaker will be Sarah Barrett, who has three minutes. And then the following person is Laura Ford, who will have four minutes, and then Roberta.
Sarah, I already unmuted you. I heard that.
Okay, should I be starting? Is my timer going already?
We will start when you start. Don't worry.
Don't cut me off. All right. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I'm going to hold up a, maybe I don't even know if this works to hold this up. But okay, I'm going to stop because it's not working. All right. The data that I'm citing for 2019, 2020 has come from the second interim report. And any year data is from an unaudited actuals for that year. So this is more about budget than specific to Measure R. The district's spending on professional services and consultants from the 2016-17 general fund budget created the year before Dr. Droudi arrived was 3.5 million. The amount reported in the 2019-2020 second interim is 8.3 million. Obvious question is that, is what are the specific expenditures in this account? The second obvious question is why has it risen so dramatically since Dr. Droudi's arrival? It seems that there is a $5 million increase, 19% annually, since 2016-2017. Additionally, in the financial stabilization plan, there is no provision to cut professional services or consultants. There is one line item to decrease contracts in fiscal and educational services by 150,000, but that's kind of peanuts. So why isn't this line item being looked at? And if it went back to the 2016-17 amount of 3.5 million, which is robust, the stabilization plan wouldn't even be necessary. I'm going to continue. I'm skipping some stuff because I just want to make sure I can get through all of it. The district spends about $80,000 a year to reimburse its most highly-paid employees for cell phone and car allowances, $10,800 to Dr. Droudi alone. There is no provision to eliminate this expense in the stabilization plan, but there are $2.1 million in teacher cuts. Between this item and the one above, about $200,000 could be saved per year. That's two teachers. Our cell phone reimbursements and car allowances to people making $130,000 to $250,000 really more important than teachers. These expenses require no documentation on the administrator's part. It's just included in their check. Additionally, while not giving any increases to employees, Dr. Droudi and the board amended his contract in June of 2018 to provide a deferred compensation payment into his 403B account of 4.2% of his base pay through 2021. This was again amended in 619 to extend this arrangement through 2022. The actual amount is a flat $10,000 per year, which currently.
That's been three minutes.
Great, thank you very much. Laura, you on?
Yeah, I am the next speaker then. If you wanted, anyone who doesn't get to complete their comments, please, I know you have been sending us emails. So if you haven't covered them already, please do send us anything additional that you wanted to say. The next speaker is Laura Ford, who has four minutes.
Okay, and can you hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Laura Ford. I would like to thank the ACLU and Peter Eliasberg for enabling us, the public, to speak here tonight. I have questions regarding your proposed plan for Measure R expenditures. Why is $6.5 million raised by Measure R not being used for academic teachers? In Measure R, quote, "Funds are used to retain highly qualified teachers and reduce class size, protect excellence in math, science, technology, arts, music, and reading." Why is it not being used for these purposes? Number two, why is $6.5 million raised by Measure R not itemized? What is it being used for? Why aren't you being transparent with that money? In audits from 2016 through 2020, almost $25 million has not been itemized. You call it, quote, "balance used to preserve programs and replace funds lost to inadequate state funding." I call it a slush fund. These Measure R funds, which Santa Monica homeowners pay for, we pay $346 in taxes a year, are supposed to be used for academic teachers and reduced class size. Why aren't you doing that? Under Measure R, who is, this might have been answered, but who is being paid $80,000 for community services? And what services are they provided in the classroom? $2.5 million is being spent on tech. I saw some tech assistants in a line item. Are they in the classroom? After Measure R was passed in 2009, $6.3 million went to academic teachers, K through 12. The rest of the money went to art, music, libraries, et cetera. All Measure R money was accounted for. This was in 2009. Why isn't that happening now? Why hasn't that happened for years? Measure R expenditures are supposed to be reviewed by an independent citizens oversight committee. Is that FOC? Who's in this committee? When do they meet? How are they picked? School board members. The world has changed. When is your budget going to change? We are in an era of distance learning. We need teachers more than ever. They are our children's lifeline to school. We don't know when this pandemic will end. Even if we go back to school in September, if COVID-19 cases go up, we're back to distance learning. We need our teachers. School board members, I urge you to use our measure for our funds, which we pay for, to invite back and pay for every academic teacher for the 2021 school year. That includes English teacher Justin Ross, who you hired this year. I read Mr. Ross's syllabus for this year when I was cleaning out my kids' room. It brought me to tears. This intelligent academic guy. All these teachers, bring them back. Thank you.
Whoops. Are we there?
We have one more, Roberta.
Yeah, the final speaker is Roberta Brown. Who has three minutes.
One minute, Lori, to find Roberta.
I don't see her on the meeting.
I don't either. Roberta Brown.
We did receive an email from her.
I show, no, there's no Roberta Brown.
There was a Roberta earlier who was logged in. It just said Roberta, but I don't see her now.
No, she is no longer in this meeting.
Okay, so then that concludes the public hearing.
Can I have her time?
No, it doesn't. Sorry, but Ms. Barrett, we did receive an email with your public comment. I believe we got it earlier last week, and I'm sure the board members have read it. I encourage you to resend that if you don't mind, which brings me to board member questions on this item. Ralph, I think you had the first question. And if other people have questions, please let me know.
My question is that can the board members get the report that's being prepared for the FOC?
So yes, it was already prepared for the FOC, rather. It was presented at the March 10 meeting, and it will be reflected in those minutes. But we can also forward it along to the Board of Education for review. And just so that we're clear on process, that detail is presented every year at the FOC meeting for input from the FOC on exactly all of the expenditures.
I appreciate that. Gerardo, is that, I thought you were doing additional research, a multi-year review? Or is that included?
Yes, that multi-year review has been finished, and I believe it's just being weighted on the other seven questions that was asked of the FOC. Once we have all eight questions, we're going to report that back to the Financial Oversight Committee.
If you could forward that to the board as well, the rest of the board. I mean, some of the board members are at the meeting, so the rest of the board.
Perfect, yes. Well, once we receive the responses to all eight questions the FOC posed, and we give them their responses, we'll forward that along to the Board of Education as well.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other further questions from the board on this item? Maria?
Just one question. Gerardo, I know that you were looking at a budget sheet right now that was more specific than the one that's included in the actual budget inside the budget, what is the agenda item?
Yes.
Because the only thing we had was a March 25, 2020, which just had the totals in terms of tech and art and all that. But George was more specific in terms of, is that something that's provided to the public on that?
Yes, it is actually required that we provide that at the Public Financial Oversight Committee meeting. As one of the public comments said, the measure does require a public oversight. And so for our purposes, the Financial Oversight Committee is that public oversight, and they receive the detailed version of all the expenditures. But as a matter of practice, we can absolutely include those in the posting for Board of Education meetings. The information doesn't change in the two-to-three-week period from when we present it to the Financial Oversight Committee to where it's posted for the public hearing for the Board of Education. So we can absolutely do that.
I think that would be great. But I think for future, I guess, when we do this again, that much of in detail come out, I guess, to the public before our meeting. That way, the questions that rose tonight would rise again because they would know specifically, you know, what the totals for the safer physical education will use, a total up to the amount that we were given in the memo of March 25. So that's just my recommendation. I think that way, you know, we're more transparent than just giving total amounts.
Absolutely. And we can make that happen. And just for everyone's reference, this detailed data sheet is provided to our auditor. Actually, that's the only way that we would be able to pass the Measure R audit if we actually had this detail. And so they are reviewing it to make sure that we're in compliance with the actual voter-approved measure. So we wouldn't have been passing our audits without this type of detail, which the auditors review and receive.
No, I know. I know you guys do a great, I mean, you follow it, and you do a great job. I'm just saying, for some of the comments that were made tonight that felt that they needed to have more, you know,
Absolutely.
detail. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. So lacking any other comment, I think I now have to take a motion to close the public hearing. So moved by Richard, seconded by Maria. Richard, roll call. Richard, yes, Craig? Maria? Oscar?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Lori?
Yes.
Ralph? You'd think I would have memorized this by now. And Kimya and Mia had to go do homework. And I'm a yes, so the public meeting is now closed. Thank you. Which brings us to our final major action item, K8, adopt emergency resolution.
Wait, 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 John. That was a vote to close the public hearing, right?
Oh, no, after we accept the report.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. There's a motion to accept it.
Actually, I think tonight's just the public hearing, and the plan comes back. Melody can correct me if I'm wrong. The plan comes back at the next meeting to adopt.
Correct.
Wait, so I was right?
Oh, you were. Perfect.
Yes.
Score one for you.
New kid. All right, which still brings us to major action item, K8, adopt emergency resolution. Is this Carrie presenting this, or Steve, who is presenting this one? Carrie? So I'm trying to unmute Carrie, but.
Unmute. I will start and then pass it on to Steve for more details. Thank you, Board, Dr. Droudi. The district must. The district must provide safe and secure and updated educational facilities. And therefore, it is essential that the district continue to perform work on projects during the pandemic to ensure that these district facilities are safe, sanitary, and sufficient to promote positive learning outcomes when the pandemic is contained and students return to our district facilities. So thereby, we're asking you to adopt an emergency resolution designating public works projects as an essential governmental function and delegating authority to the designate, to further public works projects as a central government function. Where, what it is, is during this time, there have been a number of important moves made by our state, our county, our cities to reduce contact to the safer home process. And in all of these various different orders, to this point, all of them have allowed for public works construction to be considered essential and continue. But we do find it's, it's, it's important that actually that be a designated thing that our board says that the work we're doing is, is just that and needs to continue so we can provide those facilities for those students whenever we return. Steve, do you want to take it to the next place?
Sure. So the genesis for this is, you know, the six Bay Area counties have really taken the lead in, in California in responding to COVID-19 concerns. And one of the things we've seen is that yesterday they tightened up the, their restrictions on construction activities. And we, in the past, have seen that the County of LA and the State of California at large have tended to follow the, the lead of those counties. One of the things that the, the order released by those counties yesterday required was a finding by the, by the lead agencies, and in our case, that would be the school district or our board, that the projects, the construction projects underway are essential public works construction projects. The other thing that it does is it requires that the, the contractors on each of our projects implement certain protocols. So what we've done is, and this is more of a, it's a proactive measure. Well, it's a proactive measure reacting to what, what those counties have done. I know that sounds like a bit of an oxymoron, but in anticipation of either LA County or the State of California following suit, we, we would like to move forward this designation of our projects as essential public works. And the, the second part of what, what this does is it requires certain protocols by our contractors to ensure that they're following the social distancing and, and the CDC requirements for safe workplaces. So this resolution does, does both of those things. Designates the, our projects ongoing as, ongoing and upcoming as essential public works construction projects. And then requires our contractors to comply with the protocols and to confirm to us, or rather certify to us that they are complying with those protocols. Now, when you look at the, at Exhibit B as an attachment to this resolution, you'll notice that the protocols seem very general, and they are. Those were, were taken directly from the requirements in the six-county order, public health, health order. We obviously, for each project, would refine those and make them applicable to our projects. But the, the bottom line is that each of them are going to require that our contractors keep separation between their employees, that they provide, you know, appropriate bathrooms, hand washing stations, that they, when they have meetings, that there are less than 10 people, those sorts of things. So anyway, that, that's where we are with this. It, it, it should accomplish both of those. And although it is not yet required in California or in the County of LA, we anticipate that if it becomes required, this will cover us to continue our work.
Great. Do we have any questions for Steve and/or Carrie? Yes, Oscar, and then Ralph.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve, for the information. Is this legally required, like for us? Is, is it something that other municipalities or other school districts are doing as well? Like a, a necessary step in this process so that we can designate construction as essential?
Sure. So at this point, we don't think that it's technically legally required in that the State of California has issued guidance to, to AGC, which is the Association of General Contractors, stating that ongoing construction is considered essential, an essential service. But in the event that the state or, again, the county were to take harsher or maybe more strict measures, we would want to make sure that we are, are covered for that. So as of today, we're perfectly satisfied moving forward with where we are. In other words, our construction can continue. But we, we'd like this in place in case something, something further comes from either the county or the state. Does that answer your question?
Fine. And in terms of any liability, let's say on the work site, who's responsible for monitoring? Let's say if someone's coming to work with a fever, that type of thing.
Sure. Again, a great question. So it is the contractor's responsibility, generally, I would say it's the contractor's responsibility to always ensure that they have a safe and acceptable work site. In this case, these, the, this Exhibit B to this, to this resolution puts the burden on the contractor to make sure that they're doing things like making sure that they're doing either an interview or, you know, the temperature, the temperature testing that they're doing for each of the workers as they come onto site. And we've also implemented some other things. We're absolutely not allowing anyone from the public onto our sites. Of course, as you might imagine, we don't have any meetings in person anymore. Everything is, is now virtual like this. But we're, we're now imposing through the protocol, this Exhibit B protocol, we're imposing the same thing on the contractor. And the responsibility is on the contractor to do that, and then to let us know that they have done it.
You good, Oscar? Great. So Ralph?
Yeah, just partially to answer Oscar's question. All cities are, are providing the same protocols. So job sites have to be maintained in a certain fashion. For when inspectors arrive, you know, protocols have to be met, or they just walk off the site. So although, you know, construction is all continuing, you know, these are, these are the kinds of protocols that are, that are being established, even on private projects.
Yeah, the City of Santa Monica posted something today on this very thing. And, and as we reviewed it, everything that we have in that Exhibit B would, would follow that, and we would be prepared to make sure that our contractors were following those. They would have to certify that they're following those.
Do you have any more questions for, for any staff on this? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
Thank you.
I see Ralph, and then Richard seconding it. Roll call, Richard? Craig? Maria? Thank you. Oscar? Lori?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that is seven yeses. Thank you both very much, Steve and Carrie. That is the end of our major action items. We have two information items to look at. Are there any board member items to share? Seeing none, are there any members of the district advisory committees? Craig, oh, sorry, we have a board member item from Craig.
Yeah, I just want to note, you know, we heard from Mia and from Kimmy, and I'm hearing from a lot of kids at Malibu High. I'm really gratified that our distance learning is working. I know that that's not true in a lot of different places. And I think our teachers, our staff, our leadership deserve a big thanks from all of us. They've managed to make something really difficult work. And, you know, sometimes there's silver linings too. I think part of the reason we're good at this is we got our butts kicked last year with a disaster. So, you know, it's, it, there's that too. So, but anyway, a big thanks to, to all the folks who are making that happen, including the teachers who are on the spot, having to learn to do things a very different way. But God, it's great that they're doing it.
Yeah, I think Craig speaks for all of us with that. Thank you very much, Craig. Do I have any board member comments, other than Craig's comment, which was a wonderful one? Yes, TJ?
John, I just wanted to thank you and Lori particularly for ensuring that this meeting happens and that we continue to have meetings. I think it's really important that the public continue to see us do this work. And we heard from several of the public speakers. And I think that Dr. Drotty mentioned it many different ways in his report, that this may be our new normal for the, for the duration. And I just think it's so important that the community is able to see us at work and do this. And I just want to thank you. I want to thank Sarah W. for doing all the good work that she does, and particularly for doing all of the clearance to make sure that we were, you know, hitting every note that we need to hit to stay on the right side with the Brown Act and to make sure that the people in our community have access to our meetings. And so this was no easy undertaking for you and Lori and for Sarah and Ben. I just, as one member, wanted to tell you how truly grateful I am and that we continue to have these meetings.
Thank you, TJ. And without, without addressing public comment, I do want to say that it did not, there, there was, it did not take an outside institution to make us try to create the best and most efficient and open and transparent process for a board meeting. We've been working on that since the beginning. We've been getting better. We will get better for the May 7th meeting because that's what we're about in this district, and I'm not going to address that comment any further. Any future agenda items people would like? Seeing none, I want to wish a very happy birthday to Jenny Harding, and a very happy birthday to Ken. Anybody else having a birthday out there, and guys, be safe, be healthy. And God bless y'all. I mean, it's like, it's wonderful to work with people like you and be around.
When's our next, when's our next meeting?
May 7th. So we got a break. So let's stay safe, let's stay healthy, and let's spend time with our families, because we got no choice.
Yeah.
God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, y'all.
Bye, bye.